All right, very good. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to welcome you to the Wareham Zoning Board of Appeals for tonight's meeting, Wednesday, May 10, 2017. It is 6:30. We are at room 320, Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. I'll call the meeting to order. I make a roll call to my far right, our member Wilma Engerman, our town planner Ken Buckland, our clerk Jim Akabachi, my far left associate member Jake Morrison, attorney Jen Kendrick, Carl Baptiste Senior, myself, the chair Nazir Al-Khlasie, and tonight we have our building commissioner Dave Pequina and town engineer Charles Rowley. We have some preliminary business to do. Just give us a few minutes. Minutes.
I have the minutes. I've reviewed them. I didn't find any errors.
I did too. Somebody look at the minutes?
Anybody else? Did you see the minutes?
Yes, I've seen the minutes.
Any errors? Any...
I couldn't see anything that was...
Any...
Carl?
I didn't see anything.
I wasn't here, so...
Okay. You're good? Okay.
I move we accept them as presented.
Carl?
Second?
Second by Carl. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain, five, five zero zero. Okay, we have discussion 418 County Road for minor modification. Somebody come forward, please. Okay.
Do we have this folder with us?
Let's go. Who's for Sonic? Uh... Is anybody here for Sonic? No? Okay.
You here for Sonic?
Oh, you are? They continue it for the 24th.
Yep, no problem.
That's how it goes, unfortunately.
You know, I didn't need any pizza this week.
We just found out yesterday, myself, so...
Oh, I'm sorry.
They just let us know.
Do you know a lot about a right in restaurants?
I know a little bit.
Who?
Pardon me?
Does anybody know?
No, I don't think anybody even knows. No.
All right, we'll just... We'll make an official continuance, but if you don't want to... If you could, you could wait if you want, but it'll be about half an hour we get to it. We just don't want you to wait.
You want to know what you're going to do?
No, no. We will properly vote on it to continue it, but it's about half an hour to get to it. If you wish to wait, you're welcome.
Are you...
He's in the part...
No. We're not discussing it. We just don't want you to wait, that's all.
And when the day...
The 24th.
Two weeks.
All right, you know what? Let's take it out of this. Let's go... Just give us a minute, sir. We'll go to continue public hearing petition 18-17 CTG Property LLC 3067 Cranberry Highway. The applicant has requested a continuous of the hearing to May 24. Again, in the audience, you here for... Anyone else for Sonic here? Okay, so...
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Which one?
Second.
Second, with Carl. All in favor to continue for 24, 18-17, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. So it's for the 24th. Thank you. We go back to petition 480 County Road.
Is there a house on the side?
All right, sir. Name and address for the record and tell us what you're doing here.
Yep, Roger Gaydo, Alternate Power and Energy, Fall River, Massachusetts.
Okay.
Well, as you know, we had our solar field plans approved by your town, I think it was October 12th of 2016. We've been building the project, but I know you may not have the copy that I gave you in October 2016, but on the access road, it showed where we predicted that Eversource would like their equipment to be located. Now, you don't have that particular drawing. Mr. Gormly has seen it. Is it?
Okay.
He's seen this before, and anyone who has these prints from October would be able to see it. Eversource gave me a sketch. We took the sketch, we laid out the equipment that they need on the access road, on the north side of the access road, just as planned. When we went... When we met with Mr. Gormly a few weeks ago, it looked... It looked like it would be better served on the south side of the access road. So what I've done is, I've now created a print. The print that you do have right now shows the same equipment, a mirror image on the opposite side of the road, opposite side of the access road. I want to be clear that it's not County Road we're talking about. It's the dirt access road to the solar field.
So when you come in to the right, that's where you want them?
Yeah.
Where were they before?
I don't care if it's on the right or the left, but it is better served on the right-hand side opposed to the left-hand side.
Okay.
Yep. And then I brought some pictures just so that you guys could see. That's looking... The first picture that you guys have, there's four pictures. One is looking down at the access road from the solar field. So that first picture, that's exactly where the equipment would be located.
Is this where they're going?
No, the very first, I'm sorry, the top. Oh, do I have them out of order?
Okay.
Yep, the first one.
Those are in pallets. They're not set, right? So you want them to go here. Now, let me ask you a question.
Yep.
Ronald Winter to your left, where they were supposed to be. Are there any houses there? Lot 1007C?
When you say the left, when you drive in the access road on the left?
Yeah, where they were supposed to be.
Yeah, there is. There's one house being built there.
Being built.
But remember, I'm putting the equipment not on his side now. I'm putting it on the other side of...
Right, but there's a house on the other side.
Yep. There is. It's pretty far away from the access road, but yes, there is.
But the... Excuse me.
Yeah.
For the chairman. But this equipment is going to be within five or 10 feet of this person's property line.
Yes, correct.
Now, if I may?
Yeah.
If I recall, when this was originally presented to us, the property owner from lot 10007C came in and testified he had no issues with the road, with what you guys were doing. He was dandy with everything.
Correct.
Does the property owner from lot 10007G know that you are here to make moving this to his side up against his property line?
He does know that... He does know. Actually, when Mr. Gormly came out to the site and my general contractor, Lenny Campos, he was there. And the guy's name is Mike, and Mike said, "Well, obviously, I would prefer it on that side, but I mean, if I'm being told it has to be on this side, well, I understand." And what we've done for Mike is actually over and above and beyond the trees that I am obligated to put in. We put in... We're going to be putting in so many more trees and increasing the height of the trees. So that's why I wanted to show you a shot. These pictures that I gave you are actually a shot from his yard. The very first one just shows looking down at the access road on the left. Then the one with the wood pile and the pallets, those are the views from his yard. And then fourthly, that's the equipment that Eversource is requiring on that access road. If I had... If I had my way, all of this equipment would be going out in the solar field, but that's not my choice.
All right, just let me... One second. Charlie, you okay with that? I mean, is the sound right?
Yes, I went out there and met with the applicant and his site contractor. They'd actually staked out the location of each one of these pads and the transformer units on the north side of the road. But in that whole area, many of the pads are in the drainage swale that run from almost County Road to the site where there's an inlet with a pipe that runs underneath the access road. So in many of the areas, they would be sort of fooling around in the drainage swale that should be kept open, and it's right up against the property line. If you go to the other side, there's much more room than they have right there. Plus, it may not be obvious on your plan, but it's a pretty densely wooded section that's on the abutting owner's property, and when you stand at the access road and look toward his house, it's well concealed by the woods that are there on his property. So it makes sense to move them to the other side.
Is that all right? Okay. Wilma, just a quick comment.
I just think the property owner on the right-hand side should be here to give his opinion. He approved... You know, he doesn't mind. And then the other side is... Seems to be more space running towards the left than there is towards the right. From the... I'm talking about from the road.
But Charlie was saying it's better the way they presented it now.
This is where they were proposed.
Yeah.
This is where they would be going.
Yeah.
Nothing over here. None of these units would be inside the solar farm area. They'd be on the access road.
Oh, okay. I don't like that place anyways.
If you're looking at this, this is looking at County Road.
While they're doing this, so you did talk to Mike?
Yeah. We talk to Mike all the time.
Okay, you sure?
Yeah, I am sure. Charlie was there.
All right. I know him very good.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right.
Obviously, he would prefer that it's not there. Maybe he would prefer that the solar field wasn't there, but he... You guys do understand that I'm putting all the trees that he's interested in and, you know, we're moving forward, all that, and Charlie's been checking that all along.
All right.
Oh, in addition, I wanted to note, Charlie wanted it closer to the road because there's a greater buffer of trees between the owner's house and this equipment. Just one last point. This has been pushed down as far as to the road as possible with Eversource because Eversource needs one pole in at 30 feet, one pole in at 30 feet. 10 feet away, the equipment can start. So it's starting as close as I possibly can to make everyone happy.
All right. Ken, you want to say something?
No.
Jim?
I'm good.
Jake?
Nothing.
Jen?
I have nothing.
Carl? Anyone else in the audience want to say anything? Okay, what's the wishes?
I, in fact, do believe it's a minor modification, and therefore I move to accept the modification as presented.
Any discussion on that? Hear none? I have a second.
Second.
Second by Carl. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Petition 12-17, Daniel Ruby, 13 Pearl Ave. Come forward, please.
The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on May 10, 2017, at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number 21-17 for a special permit from requirements of Article 13, Section 1335 of the Wareham zoning bylaws to Daniel Ruby, 2937 Hill Ave., Dorchester, Mass. 02125, seeking to enclose an existing porch and alter the porch to lie within the existing property lines located at 13 Pearl Ave., Wareham, Mass. That's on assessors map one, lot 1-88 in the Onset Village 2 zoning district.
All right, name and address for the record and tell us what you're doing.
Daniel Ruby, 2937 Hill Ave., Dorchester.
Okay, and can you explain to us what you're doing?
I'm enclosing the porches. There were... There was existing porches already, but there were screen porches.
Yeah.
And I put windows in there and I put up siding. I have pictures of the finished product if you wanted to see.
You already did it?
Yeah.
Oh, what, you got busted without a permit?
No, I had a permit for windows, I had a permit for siding, I had a permit to install all the new architectural roof shingles.
Okay.
And to insulate inside, but I was under the impression... I was under... I contracted myself, and I was under the impression since it was an enclosed porch already, even though it was a screen porch, that I wouldn't... I could just put in windows and enclose it. But no, I'm after making it living space as well, so I have to go through Sonic.
Okay, but did you... When... You have to call it... You have to comply with the...
Absolutely, I understand.
With the... First of all, the fittings, with the insulation, with all that?
Yeah.
Because you're making a living space now.
No, I totally understand, but I didn't go that far yet. Like, I just have the frame, and then the inspector asked me to stop, so I stopped.
Do we see the pictures?
Okay.
I have the finished... I'll have to have a look.
Like somewhere else, you mean?
No, I got some photographs printed. You might have seen it before, but I have the after pictures.
You have something here for us, right? Is this it? It says, "As built, enclosed porch." That's the one?
Yep.
This is the final?
Yeah, I have bigger pictures if you want to see them.
All right, well...
Are there two issues here, Mr. Pequina? It looks like there's an issue with it being over the property line. It seems like you've identified two separate issues, one with...
It is actually over the property line.
One with respect to...
The existing deck that was there was over the property line, so...
Existing.
So what had happened was, he enclosed the deck. So it was... It was an alteration of a pre-existing non-conforming structure. That's why he needs to go for a special permit, but he had done the enclosure without the proper permits initially to get started. So we can't authorize... A special permit or a variance cannot authorize work on somebody else's property. So one of the issues that he has is that he's going to have to cut that back in order to make the modifications, and even if he cuts it back, he's going to be on the property line.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, but I'm... Like, when I built this, I didn't know I was going over the property line, but I'm definitely willing to remove the siding and pull it back to the property.
You're going to have to.
No, I would gladly do that, no problem, you know?
Okay.
If I have the photographs you want to see.
I know. All right, is there anyone in the audience in favor of that project? Yeah, ma'am?
Cheryl Courtney, I want 10 Pearl Ave.
Just come closer, I gotta be on record.
10 Pearl Ave., Cheryl Courtney, Dan's neighbor. He has made 100% improvement to our neighborhood.
You ought to get closer so he goes on record.
Okay. He has made 100% improvement to the neighborhood by doing what he's done to this house. It was a shack. I mean, it looks beautiful. It's a pleasure to have him there, and he's done everything really, really nice, so just want to... The whole neighborhood feels this way, so...
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Anyone opposed? Hear none? David, just one of us quick again? I didn't hear... I was busy looking when you said... That's an existing non-conforming.
Right, it is. It was already over the property line, and it's been that way for a long time. So he's trying to enclose it.
Right.
And for that reason, he has to come in front of the board of appeals, but there... I don't believe that there's any relief that can be granted for an alteration over the property line. So I think he's going to have to cut it back to the property line, and if it's an improvement, I think we can go ahead. I think the board can go ahead and improve it.
Are you in a flood zone?
No.
Okay.
Me...
Danny?
To Dave, through the chairman to build an inspector, what would happen if the abutting property that's been encroached upon granted an easement? And he then had...
I mean, legally, he may already have one in effect.
Adverse.
How long has it been that way?
Yeah.
All right, we gotta do it taken.
They still have to take it, but yeah, and add...
Go ahead.
I tried to... I called into the house twice to meet the owner, to explain to her, but she lives in New Hampshire, and she just gives the house to her daughters every summer, and they come down twice a week for the summer, so I couldn't get in contact with her. But I wanted to explain all this to her, but she's an older woman, and I tried, but I couldn't get in contact with her as well.
Better he moves it if he wants to move it, if he can.
Yeah, you're willing to... You're willing to make it conform?
Absolutely, yeah.
All right.
It'd be great if I didn't, but I'm not. I'm going to do what she's saying, you know?
Wilma?
Well, being over the property line and...
I forget.
He enclosed it, and that way it's enclosed... It isn't... It can't be an enclosed porch. He can't say it's an enclosed porch. He enclosed the building to make it. It's another room.
Right.
It's not a porch.
That's why you're going to have to comply with mass check, with the structure. David will take care of that.
And the... I mean, that does not comply with the property line, even though it was built maybe before. But that was just a porch on that before. It wasn't a... It wasn't an extra room.
Done now, Karen. Ken, want to say something?
Question, what has to be moved? You've mentioned shingles. What does actually have to be moved to make conform to the property line?
The front of the house is in the correct spot. The back of the house is like six inches over in the wrong direction, so I have to pull the back of the house in. The front of the house is good, but the back of the... I can show you a photograph if you like.
I'd like to see the photographs.
So it's actually sitting on an angle, so there's a small portion of the actual structure itself that's over the property line, but that's existing.
All right, yeah, hold on one. Let me... Is the one you're adding above... Over the property line?
No, it's existing.
The existing... You're not touching... Show me here, please.
Sure.
This is the existing?
No, that's the back of the house.
Okay.
This is the side of the house. It's six inches... This is the neighbor's fence.
Okay.
And it's six inches.
And where is the new thing you're doing, the porch?
This is it.
So when you did the porch, you went six inches over? Or it was six inches?
It was already six inches over. And then this is the correct spot. This was over too far.
All right, so it's not the back of the house. The one you're working on is six inches over.
Correct. And this is the neighbor's fence, and it's on... Actually, on the inside.
All right, so you're going to fix it, right?
Yeah.
All right.
I'll fix it. I'll fix it.
Okay, no problem. I guess he's going to fix it, so no issue. It's going to be better, I guess. Good, Jim?
Saves us a lot of brain work.
Jen?
I'm fine.
David's fine, I'm fine.
All right. Anyone else want to make comment? I hear none. Move to close, maybe?
So moved.
Do I have a second to close public hearing?
Second.
Second by general in favor, close, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. It's closed. What's the wishes?
I just want to be sure we're voting on here. So you're seeking a special permit to do what?
To enclose the porches.
To enclose the porch.
Originally, there were screen porches.
So if we grant that special permit, the condition would have to be that you bring it entirely onto your own property?
Not a problem.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then I move in that manner, that we grant the special permit with the condition that the structure be altered such that it is not encroaching onto another property.
Okay, do I have a second for that?
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion on that? Wilma, any discussion, any conditions?
He's going to take that section that he... He really took and... How can you put it? He didn't window it in, he didn't screen it in. He completely enclosed it.
Right, he's making it a living space.
Yeah. So he's... And to me, he's too close to the property line, and I think that with this addition now...
If I may, Wilma?
I think that he...
We're not going to argue the case now. We're going to just put conditions.
Yeah, as I said, I think that if he can move it...
Okay.
It would be fine.
All right, so we're writing that. It's closed, you can't talk. So I'm sorry, that's it. All right.
You want to make findings that the... It's not more detrimental, substantially not more detrimental to the neighborhood?
Well, let's finish the conditions first. Who else want to put a condition? Just, I'd like to add to meet all state and local building codes. All right? And findings, Jen, you good with the findings?
Um, I... You're putting me on the spot here.
You're the lawyer in the family.
I can't...
This is under 1335 procedure.
Right, right. Well, the existing nonconformity had to do with the distance with the setback, right?
Correct.
Okay. Here, he's actually improving that nonconformity by agreement.
Yes.
And based on the testimony from the neighbors, it is an improvement to the neighborhood, therefore not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Based on those factors, I would find that we could approve this as a special permit under Section 1335 and that no variance is required in this circumstance.
Okay. With the standard condition of a special permit, we have that.
Right.
Okay. All right, do I have a second for that?
Second.
Second by Carl. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. Thank you.
Very much.
You're welcome. Second on 22-17, John Spinell, 9 Oak Hill Road.
I, in fact, have seen instances where they take a pied piece of one property...
Thanks, Jake. I appreciate that.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
From New Hampshire.
From New Hampshire.
Sorry, don't care.
Well, you gotta yell real loud when you're in New Hampshire. You've got stuff to go in this folder. Oh, you know what, we gotta sign this before we hear the next one.
Okay.
Because Cal's gonna escape on us.
Where are you going, you got a detail?
I'm gonna put a string on your ankle or something, I don't know. That's why he's good at, that's why he's good at his job, because he likes, you know, the kids like to go to the school and then scoot out the back door.
I got three grand.
I don't know what you said. I, I don't know what you just said.
He, he, he's the, um, on-site at the school.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. He keeps.
That's all right, he don't have it either.
That's what everybody thinks.
We don't need Jake's signature on this one, do we?
Did you sign?
Yes, sir.
Did you, nice? I could look, I guess, instead of asking. Be with us, 'cause if we don't do this now, you know what happens? They scoot out, and then the secretary's yelling at us for not doing it.
No rush.
Okay.
To Wilma, and in the folder, and this is the next one.
This is the next one.
And this is twenty-two seventeen. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on May tenth, two thousand seventeen, at six thirty PM in room three twenty of the Wareham multi-service center, forty-eight Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. zero two five seven one. To consider petition number twenty-two dash seventeen for a special permit from requirements of Article thirteen, Section thirteen thirty-five, in conjunction with use table six twenty-one of the Wareham zoning bylaws to John A. Spinell, Jr., one twenty-one Central Street, Norwell, Mass. zero two zero six one, seeking to raise and reconstruct a single-family dwelling on a non-conforming lot located at nine Oak Hill Road, Wareham, Mass. That's on assessors map thirty-nine, Lot T thirteen, in the R thirty zoning district.
Name and address for the record?
Sure, it's, uh, John Spinelli, um, one twenty-one Central Street, Norwell, Massachusetts, owner of nine Oak Hill Road in Wareham. Brad Bertolo, J.C. Engineering.
Who's presenting the case? Okay, go ahead, sir.
Uh, we're here today filing for a special permit to reconstruct nine Hill, nine Oak Hill Road here in Wareham. We're looking to continue the improvements in the area of Tempest Knob and build a seventeen-hundred to eighteen-hundred square foot home. Uh, the current footprint of the home is, uh, conforming. The new footprint of the home is also conforming. It was the recommendation of the building inspector that we come here today and file for the special permit. I'm a twenty-five-year resident of the town of Wareham. Had since moved away, but bought this property as a seasonal home for my family. I think you have plans of the, uh, current site. Few other improvements on the home that we're planning on doing is, um, redoing the parking space, which is currently has a failing retaining wall, uh, as well as, uh, the retaining wall on the water side of the property, which is currently failed. Uh, we have been through the conservation process and had a unanimous approval, uh, for the project with, uh, conservation. And here to answer any of the questions that you might have.
Okay. Do you have architectural plans?
Um.
We don't have. All right, and you're asking a relief, a relief from thirteen thirty-five? What section can they ask a relief from?
I don't know if it's relief or is it?
Just a special permit.
All of these require a special permit, is it? Is this, is an automatic special permit?
Where's the, uh, building inspector's letter?
There isn't one.
I, I actually did not write a letter in this case, because there was, there was a little bit of confusion as to how this, this project was actually gonna proceed. I initially was going to just issue him, um, an actual building permit for this project, because it's a non-conforming lot, but the structure itself conforms to all dimensional characteristics of the bylaw.
Okay.
So there was some opposition, and, and I think this is, this is probably the cleanest way to go about getting this project approved, um, is, is to have him come in front of the board and, and get any opposition out in the open. Uh, if he gets granted a special permit, it is a non-conforming lot, so, so he, he can come in front of the board for a special permit because of the non-conforming lot.
The size of what?
Correct.
Doesn't he need a special?
It's a non-conforming lot, but it's not a non-conforming structure.
Right, but doesn't he need a special permit to tear down and replace?
There's, there's some disagreement about that. Okay, if, if the house itself conforms to all dimensional characteristics, then he could get the special permit? I, I feel he doesn't necessarily need one.
Okay, so why?
Because you have to separate non-conforming lots and non-conforming structures and non-conforming uses, they're all individual.
Why didn't you give him the permit? And who doesn't like it can appeal it?
Because the, the appeal process is probably quicker this way.
Yeah, but we don't, I, I, I don't feel comfortable, because you had the pressure or some.
No, 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 it's.
And now, if you had like somebody complaining, you send them to us, and you believe you could give him the permit without coming to us?
He, he can still come in front of the board for a special permit at his own request. It's a non-conforming lot, he's requesting a special permit on his own, it's not, it's not by my denial. It's at his own request for a special permit, and that's, that's fine, he's allowed to do that.
Okay, so.
He still has a non-conforming lot, so he's, he's requesting a special permit on his own behalf.
All right.
Because of the non-conforming lot.
Me, what we're wanting to do is see if there's anybody from the neighborhood.
It was your professional opinion that one would not be needed.
Correct.
All right, let's go. Then, I guess, special permit. Let's go one by one, then. Wilma, what do you wanna say?
I, uh, it's gonna be twenty-six feet from the coastal bank, and so that means that they're in the, it could be in the flood zone, which means that they have to have a, to build up the house at least eighteen feet.
Whatever the flood elevation is there, what's a flood, uh, what says on AE what?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, so it has to be at fourteen.
Eighteen feet, fourteen feet, yeah.
Okay.
I don't see anything here that says.
Top of four, eighteen.
Yeah. But I'm just saying. Foundation is.
Next.
They're adding another from the house. I don't know, I don't.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Even, even with the house being in the flood zone, the height of the house when it's done is going to conform to the zoning bylaw.
Everything conforms except the lot size.
Everything conforms except for the lot size, correct.
That part, that part I know, but I mean, it's still, um, I'm not gonna, I wouldn't approve not having a fourteen feet if it was in there.
No, no, but that's not zoning, that's flood zone. That stuff will conform when it's.
And then, and then they're, they're going to be, uh, forty-two feet long on the house.
Correct.
And twenty-four feet wide.
Correct.
And before it was thirty-two, so they, so they added another ten foot. Instead of building on, as being a nonconformity, they, instead of building on the footprint, they added ten more feet.
Still conforming.
Right.
All right, uh, would you just take next comment, Jim?
Um, I'd like to reserve my comments until we've had a chance to hear from anybody in the neighborhood.
Ken, do you want?
For or against?
Sorry, I'm, I'm sorry. Ken, you wanna say?
No, nothing to add.
All right, Jake? Jen?
Melvin at the start.
All right, anyone in the audience, in the audience in favor? Hear none, against? Come, come forward, please. One other time, name and address.
Hello, my name is Sean McCaffrey. I'm one of the owners at seven Oak Hill Road. I actually have a submission, uh, for the board, and I hope I made. I, I have seven, so I don't know if that's gonna be enough or not.
That's okay, we could check. So you the one, the left or the right?
Uh, so if you're at the water, I'm on the left.
Okay.
All right.
So essentially, um, this is a little bit of a summary of where we're coming from in opposition to this. Mr. McQueen and I, we, we had a lengthy, very good discussion about non-conforming uses and lots. I, I'm an attorney, I'm also on the zoning board in my town, but I don't pretend to be an expert, um, on this. But I think that this, uh, really needs to go to the full consideration of thirteen, I'm gonna quote the wrong one, so thirteen thirty-five.
Okay.
Which, um, this is a expansion of a non-conforming property. There is a case law that is behind that, and I hate case law, quite frankly, when someone comes before my board, and, but it does tie into this, and there's a, a great quote right there, and what I give, I didn't give cases, what I gave is something that we were given by our town council, which is a summary of uses and things like that, it's actually put out by the state. Um, and there's something right on there talking about how, um, it's not so clear that this non-conforming lot, he doesn't have the frontage, and he doesn't have, uh, the lot size. And I think if you, I haven't seen the most recent plan, but the other one is a lot coverage. It's twenty-five is the, is the limit, he's at twenty-three five. And that is on the plan that I had seen last. Every walkway, every patio is being removed, so they can get under that twenty-five number, and this lot is like this. So I don't really know how you're gonna have a property that is like this going down to the water without a single set of stairs, patios, or walkways. So that's, I'd question that one as well, as to whether or not that's gonna be. They're not going to be, um, they're not gonna have the square footage, and they're not gonna have the frontage. Um, so I think that the bylaws, I read it, and I know that Mr. McQueen and I had this discussion that he didn't really think that he needed to, because he had the, uh, the other dimensional requirements, setbacks. I don't see that anywhere, and I'm reading the, the section here, I don't see that. Um, and I think that if you look at thirteen thirty-five, I think we should be looking at the criterion established by the bylaw, and it reads very clearly. I know there are other towns, um, you know, I'm very familiar with other bylaws. Sudbury, in fact, has changed, they, they gave this, and I think there are other towns, it might even be Harwich actually has something in their bylaw that says, if you don't have everything, you're okay. Well, the Wareham bylaw, unless I'm reading it wrong, and I, I've read it about a thousand times, I'm not seeing that that's a lot. So that's the first premise I have. If you go down through, um, you know, the requirements here, which are, it's gonna increase the nonconformity, um, well, or intensify, I should say. Well, first of all, it doesn't conform to the requirements of the current bylaw. Doesn't have the frontage or the, the lot size. It is gonna intensify, uh, the nonconformity in that you're gonna have a pretty big house, and I'm sorry, I, I, we've been through a few conservation trips together, but I've not seen a, an actual house plan yet, so it's seventeen to eighteen hundred square foot, I, 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 that's news to us, and it's, I'm sure news to the other abutters who are here as well. But you have this small lot, and you're now gonna put a house that can be up to thirty-five feet high, and it's gonna cover a lot more of that lot. That's clearly gonna intensify the nonconformity, it's a small lot. The other part that comes to this as well, um.
Can I, can I interrupt for one minute? Through the, through the chair, do you mind?
Go ahead.
Um, if, if the existing house remained, I'm, I'm listening to your premise, and if the existing house remained, and he came to the town and asked if he could increase it in stories, not tear it down, and go to thirty-five, no, go to thirty-four feet eleven and three-quarter inches, 'cause he wants to leave a little bit of room for her. Would that make the place less conforming?
If he stayed within the footprint?
If he just.
Stayed within the footprint.
Raise the height of his existing structure.
He's staying within the footprint, so, I mean, I, I wouldn't see that as he's not increasing, well, he's going up, and I think, you know, if you look at the bylaw, it does impact the, you know, what is that, thirteen thirty-five F, and the impacts on the neighborhood, um, so.
No, my, I guess, okay, so, so, I guess you've answered my question by trying not to, go ahead.
No, I, I'll be honest with you, I, I've actually wrestled with this quite a bit, and I've, I've talked to a friend of mine who's the municipal council. Uh, it's taken a little while to get through the cement, um, I'll admit that, okay? But I, I just see that, um, as I read the bylaw, it really should go to the considerations of, of the bylaw, which, the big one for me, um, is this whole thirteen thirty-five F, um, which talks about the impact to the neighborhood. Um, his application is completely silent to the effect that it has on the abutters' views. I'm here, there's, there's other.
Are views a consideration here?
Yeah, sure.
Views?
It is right in the bylaw, I mean, that's what it says. Reselling impacts from views and vistas from abutting properties in private ways.
We do have in our bylaw.
Yeah, so that, that is right there. Um, I took some pictures that are there, one from my yard. It's a little hokey, it's me standing with a twenty-foot, twenty-two-foot sailboat mast to show where the height would be, and that's twenty-two feet, and you can see in that picture, it goes another thirty-five feet. That's clearly gonna block our view, um, and we tried to give you also a little perspective on this, this property. It's a very small, little six-hundred-foot property, sits down. It's one of the few properties remaining on that street that now actually gives you a vista from the road. So yeah, yeah, I mean, it has a direct impact, I will see that structure every day. Uh, my neighbors will see that structure every day. Um, so yeah, that is, that is a big part of this. One of the members also brought up that it is in a flood plain. Um, I, again, as much as I should know more about this, I know that there's a separate flood plain overlay, you know, section of your bylaw.
Why, if he complied with FEMA, we have not to do it.
So he doesn't need to address it or anything, it just?
He has to go to the building commissioner and get approved. Let me ask you a question.
Sure.
How, how big is your house, how many square feet, and how high?
I think it's fourteen.
Fourteen hundred, two-story?
Two-story, yeah, and I think there was a variance probably thirty years ago. And if you look at the properties along this road, um.
What was the variance granted, I mean, this, of the subject?
I, I didn't own it thirty years ago, so I, I know.
I'd like to go on your letter, in your comments.
Sure.
Now, we gotta, what, what we like to deal has, we like to deal with facts. Now, you comment about twenty-three percent of coverage, and you might.
Twenty-three point five, that's what it is.
Right, and it's twenty-five, well, and that's what's before us, now. I ca, I'm not gonna say what if he does, what if he does. So, uh, section thirteen thirty-five, as I understand it, and most of the board members understand, it's the discretion of the board. I, I see here what you say in the case law, uh, uh, like Bransford versus zoning board of Edgar Town and, and Norwell, the other one, Jorgaland?
Yeah, I, I can never pronounce it.
Right, so.
Land or something, yeah.
It's, uh, we, when we look at thirteen thirty-five ourselves, and I'm sure that the court had looked in Edgar Town and Norwell, we, we decide if it's detrimental or not, just like the case before you. So if your house is six hundred square feet, the neighbor's six hundred, the next to you, seven hundred, the other eight hundred, and a guy coming to do two thousand, then we could enforce our thirteen thirty-five and go to, for a variance. It will be our discretion to call it a variance. But when the neighbors, I don't know how many square feet the house to the, from the road to the left, like, your, your house is fourteen hundred, I know there's a house next to you, just get built maybe four thousand. So, and all the houses are big on the road.
Um.
One other time.
Yeah, I shouldn't interrupt you, I'm sorry about that, that's, that's.
Okay, well, there is small houses, they, they won't be there for long, anyway. But, uh, believe me, the way things go, so, uh, so the discretion of the board, if, if we feel it's not detriment, and again, that's my own opinion, the board might feel different. We, if we feel it's not detriment to the neighbor, it doesn't change the, the, the neighborhood harmony, and it's not different, so the board then believe it's a special permit and can very comfortably grant it. Now, if he comes here and says, I wanna make four stories and I need a variance, or I wanna call it a special permit, we say, no, it's a variance. If we see, if we see if it's invasive and it's detriment to the neighborhood. I, I, I went to look at the property, I walked there, it's, it's a nice property. Like he said, he owned it for so long, he, I liked the plan he did, I think it's an improvement to the neighborhood. I know you're gonna lose a little bit of anger of your view, but you still have the whole ocean, but again, this is my opinion. But I cannot, I cannot go with the case laws you present them, because I don't think they apply in this case, personally. Surface, again, on your letter, on the surface were traffic. I mean, how much, you, you said it's not gonna increase much, the noise, I don't think it'll be, I mean, how much noise he's gonna increase, he's been there for twenty-five years, if the house is bigger.
Okay.
One other time, one other time.
Let me, let me just correct that. I, I, I've lived in the town twenty-five years, I've only owned the property for two years.
Two years, okay, well, you've been going there?
Just to clarify that.
Okay, I mean, if he, if he's married and he has another kid, I mean, we all have kids, and how much more noise? The runoffs, well, they're gonna have to address the runoffs with conservation, this is not for us to address. Flood zone, that's also, again, building inspector, conservation, and so we can, there's only so many things. So it's, you're not, you're not comparing apples to apples, it's, uh, and we, it's not facts. When he comes with coverage twenty-three point five, and the bylaw says twenty-five, well, before us, twenty-three point five. In the future, if he goes out and make a patio, you call the inspector, the commissioner say, hey, he's exceeding, he needs a variance. Why don't you continue before we could take both questions?
Number one, obviously, it's within your discretion, I, I understand that fully. Two things, uh, it should be mentioned, the conservation order has been appealed, so that's, that's, that's still pending.
Okay.
With all due respect to Mr. Spinelli, he's never lived there. Um, you know, we, we met during a conservation meeting, he sat next to me, so, um, it's not as if he's ever lived in the property. And quite frankly, I don't think I've ever seen him there.
Let me, let me, let me just clarify.
What's that go-to though, I'm sorry?
Excuse me, hey, timeout, timeout. Please, timeout, one other time, continue, please.
No, I, I mean, if John wants to address it, that's fine.
Go ahead, sir. Please, timeout, let's not talk over each other, keep it civilized.
I lived in the town for twenty-five years in Pinehurst Beach. Lower Avenue, directly across the waterway from this property. I now live in Norwell with my family. I purchased the home two years ago with the plans to improve the property. I don't live there.
Okay, very good.
But I don't see where it's relevant, but I hope I clarified it.
Now that's clear, okay, Jen, please, what do you?
I was just trying to, uh, clarify what that went to.
I, I think it was just a point about, and the chair was making a point about them living there and things like that, and, and I. living there and things like that, and, and I, I have no ill will towards this gentleman, and quite frankly, if he does, if he is successful, I'm sure I'll have, I'll be louder and I'll have more noise coming from my house, I'm not, that's not my point, but it just seemed as if this was someone who was living there and they were just expanding the property.
Well, I think, I was, I was clear, to be fair, I was clear on his, what he had said, but are you trying to say that there's some, this somehow impacts our consideration?
No, I just was clarifying that point, that it, but I, I, look, in the big picture of things, I will say this...
Do you live there full-time?
Uh, no.
Okay.
But I, I'm, there is a concern that I have, and, and this came up before, and John, you know, he put it right down, there's a concern that it was bought for very low money, and it's a property that could be flipped, because it's going from a six-hundred-foot little tiny thing, again, I'm just putting that out there.
Yeah, but that's, that's totally irrelevant, it's a free country, he could do it, I mean, he could flip houses.
Sure, yeah.
I just want to cut you short, because there's more people want to speak.
Sure.
Ma'am, if we take, can you come for, you got to come forward with the microphone? Well, counselor, you could come back again, but let's hear from everyone, you know, go ahead, ma'am, sit down, please.
I'm coming over.
Name and address for the record?
Ellen McCaffrey, Seven Oak Hill Road, and what I'm saying, actually, is not really relevant to the discussion, but the whole thing about living there, my family has owned that property next to that for over forty years, so I have been at that beach house for forty years straight, so I'm very familiar with that street, I'm very familiar with the neighbors and how the neighborhood is laid out, and yes, we do have a big construction next door to us, what you mentioned, the four-thousand-square-foot house, that is a house that was built on two lots, that is a not-one-lot house, you didn't see us here in connection with that, that house was built on two lots, a totally different situation compared to the one lot, the structure that he's trying to put on there. And I'd like to, I mean, I know you guys were talking about your discretion, I thought with thirteen thirty-five, the petitioner had to show you how it wasn't a detriment to the neighborhood, and I'd like to show you those pictures, because I don't think you've seen them yet, with regards to height.
If I may, yeah, as you're speaking, it don't matter if he shows us, does he show us, still our discretion, because he could show us the most beautiful thing, we still probably believe it's detriment, or he could not show us nothing, it's irrelevant what he thinks, so go ahead, show us.
But I thought the burden was on him to at least show you...
Of course.
The burden to show you with regards to that it wasn't a detriment, and that it was ultimately your decision, I did not see him present any information with regards to whether it was a detriment or not. I'm going to present some information, even though it's, where's the picture from the street?
Uh, they probably have that up there.
They have that.
Okay. Do they have a mast one?
This one right here?
No, they haven't.
Do they have the mast one? Okay, so it's, thank you.
Yeah, we all have it.
Okay, so that mast, if you see, that's only, that's only twenty-two feet up.
Through, through the chair, can I...
Yeah.
We got an engineer here, you, you gave us architectural patterns, is in fact the house going to be thirty-five feet?
Uh, no, it's going to be about just under twenty-eight feet.
Okay.
Do I have any square feet?
So why am I hearing thirty-five feet?
Seventeen hundred.
If I make just point of order, Carl has to leave.
Okay.
So it is seven thirty, and Carl Baptiste leaving, Jake would sit on his case, and here, Jake would continue the hearing, next time, Carl, if he reviews the tape, he could sit back on it. Okay, very well.
Can I just address that one point, the reason why?
Yeah.
Is that's what the application says, it says no greater than thirty-five feet, and like I said, we've never seen an actual plan of a house, we've only seen the foundation plan, so that's why...
Okay.
We had no idea.
That answers my question.
I missed that, how high is that house?
Twenty-seven feet.
Twenty-seven. Did you see those architectural patterns?
Under thirty-five.
We haven't seen them, but...
Do you want to give them one?
Sure, yeah, I haven't seen them.
He's got one right here.
As, if I may, for the record, our zoning, our zoning provides for a structure to go up to thirty-five feet, so when they filed, they filed, they put, they used the wording that it would be thirty-five feet or lower, they didn't state their actual height, so these people heard thirty-five.
This picture I hear is off the deck of your house.
They respond to thirty-five.
Yep.
The actual height is, I think I heard twenty-seven, twenty...
What's the height of your house?
I don't know. With all due respect, it's, it's already, it's not really in question, right?
Right.
No, 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 no.
Well, I, I, I think it goes to the character of the neighborhood, and if this house is in keeping in conformity with other houses in the neighborhood, I do think that it is relevant to our consideration.
I will say this, I don't know what mine is, but I, I'm certain that the, the new one, I'm sure that's, that's right, it's up there.
This isn't the new one, is, is that...
No, no, so the other, so right to, if you went to the right, his house is there.
Okay.
And our house sits very much farther back from the beach than that.
No, we're right on the actual street.
We're actually right on the street.
But we...
There was a mention, there was a mention, I think from the chair, saying that not for long, there'll be big houses there, I might have misphrased that, I mean, this is a, this is a dirt road, this is not Oak Street, so Oak Street, I'm sure you're familiar with, this runs down the beach, this is actually a little dirt road that goes around, and the only new construction that was there was obviously the one right next to us that we talked about that had the two lots.
What I only meant, a lot of people buying small houses and making bigger for growing families, so I didn't mean anything to offend anybody. What's the height of the house now, right now?
Uh, it's a single story with relatively low pitch, I didn't, I didn't measure it, but probably within fifteen feet.
Thirteen, fourteen?
Thirteen, fourteen.
It's about fifteen.
Fifteen?
Yeah, it's pretty accurate.
Okay.
It's twenty-five, thirty-two.
Again, through, through the chair, so if, if I, just because what I'm hearing, I got a lawyer's style affidavit or whatever you want to call your presentation.
My apologies.
That's all right, lawyers, no, 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 lawyers love words and they love lots of, they love to do the, but if I could...
Yeah.
What I heard, I filtered, I put you through my filter, and what I heard was a concern for your view.
I, I think that's part of it, and one thing that the chair pointed out, I, I'll admit, I, I'm a little against the big McMansionizing thing, and, and it's, his house isn't, I, I, again, I'm just looking at these plans for the first time, but that, that's part of it too, is that...
And to the lady, to your, to your, right, okay, and your concern is the view?
The view, of course, it's the biggest...
That was my question.
And also the property, you're taking off pretty much seventy-five percent of that property now, it's going to have a house on it, okay, which is going to, going to change, the vista from the street, it changes the whole thing.
The setbacks are very short as well, it's only ten feet, so there's going to be...
I think instead of seventy-five percent, it's going to be twenty-three point five percent. I think you might have misspoke on that.
I, my apologies.
That's okay, I'm not easily misled.
All right, sir, if you don't mind, name and address?
My name is Dave Talty, I live at Five Oak Street, I'm an abutter, directly across the street.
Across the street, yep.
The back of my house is facing Mr. Spinelli's lot, and I'd like to say that there is a great detriment to my family with the proposed plan in the, in the fact that it's going to completely destroy the view that I have. I've lived at Five Oak Street for about four years, at the time that I purchased my home, this lot, this, this house was for sale for quite a long period of time, and the impression that I was given from the neighbors and the current owners of the house and the realtor was that there wasn't a lot of interest in this lot because of the restrictions that would be placed on anybody adding to it, so that I could be pretty comfortable in knowing that the view that I had would be the view that I, I should be expected to continue with. And so I've taken some photos of, from my deck, my, my home is sixteen hundred square feet, if, I don't know if you remember this, but there was a cottage there that got hit, struck by a car, knocked off its foundation, and the previous owner rebuilt this home in two thousand twelve and sold it to me in two thousand thirteen. So I have some photos.
Do you know what's the elevation of your ground level there, of your yard?
I'm much higher, I'm not in the floodzone.
And how high from the road you are, if you, roughly, if you say, your first floor?
Wow.
I mean, if this is the road, how high are your house, how much higher?
Do you go up steps to get into your first floor?
Well, my, my, my home was built, it's kind of the reverse layout.
Salt box.
The living area is on the second floor, the, the first floor, which is below ground level for, except for about four feet.
Oh, it's like a raised ranch kind of?
Similar, there's two bedrooms and a, and a full bath downstairs, which most of that is below the ground level, and then my, my second level, which is higher from the front than it is from the rear, is where we enter and exit the house, so we have, we have steps up to the deck.
Help me place your house, do you have frontage on two streets, front and rear?
Yes, I'm the first house on Oak Street, the green.
Yep.
The greenhouse on Oak Street, but the backside is on Oak, Oak Hill Road.
Yep, got it.
So this is the view from, couple of views from my deck, showing that my, my current...
Brad, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, the elevation between Oak Street and Oak Hill...
Oh, different?
It's a good fifteen, twenty feet, no?
Oh, it's different.
I see. He is, he is definitely lower than where I sit, however, that's my view from standing on my deck, so you would see that if you add a second floor to that, it's going to remove the view to...
Do you mind if I ask some more questions?
Is this from your second floor, sir?
This is from my deck.
Which is...
Which is, it's like one and a half.
Okay.
Because the, the first floor is below ground.
Good. So I'm going to let you get back to the table, because our...
The microphone.
Our microphone, our microphone manager will be turning the volume up and our ears will all be ringing, but my question is, from your home, if I, I'm semi-familiar with the neighborhood...
Yeah.
From your home, across, as you go across the street, either between this little house that's about to, that's under discussion, or between, and the, and the white one that shows in the left of your picture, or between some houses, there's a, there's a path down to the...
The right of way is actually to the right of, of Sean and Ellen's house, so...
And Sean and Ellen's house is to the right or left of this?
If you're looking at these photos, they're to the right.
Okay.
And then to the right of their house is...
So their house is the one that's got blue stain on the house or the shed or...
And that boat, the boat there is...
So those trees, and that, these trees in this picture?
Those trees are in Mr. Spinelli's property, and some of those are in the plant.
And the walkway down is between those trees and that little blue?
No, no, on the other side of the house.
On the other side, okay.
Between their house and the new McMansion is our right of way.
Okay.
I'll just, I'll just note that three of those trees are dead and were proved to be removed.
Okay.
So, so this current plan, not only is he going up, but he's also expeding to the sides, and I, and I do realize that he's within the setbacks, but that, but the impact on our view and our, and our lighting is, is a detriment to us.
Let me throw an idea, I'm not an architect, but just an idea, maybe both, both of you can comment on it, what if the applicant go as a ranch style, so he go forward to the front of the zoning setback towards the road, where elevation's seventeen, and he builds like his house, and then he steps down, and his house right here will be the same height, so his house would, he will have a living space on his existing house, but the roof would be a deck maybe, or like a porch, but we will have to grant him a variance, and the neighbors would have to agree with him if he, if he agrees to it, if he makes a ranch style.
Yeah, in the Conservation Commission, one of the requests was...
I don't speak for Conservation.
No, I know, I just wanted to make a, a point that, that goes to what you're stating, they had recommended that if he was going to tear it down, to move the whole structure closer to the road, and they didn't want to do that because there's a sewer pump that, that would be in that area that they, they did not want to move, so if they were to do what you, what you're saying, they would have to agree to, to move that sewer pump.
Where's the sewer pump, in his land?
Yeah.
Yeah, but where is the pump roughly, where is the pump, Brad?
You have to ask them.
Yeah, that's for his own sewer.
Correct.
Yeah, but he could have it inside the house.
I'm just stating, that was the response when the request was made, to move the whole foundation.
I don't, the sound, I suggest...
I, I would be, I would be more than happy to say that yes, if the, if the height isn't going up and it's not going to...
Well, it's going to be, because it's, if he's, the elevation right now, eighteen, so, and not, down here is twelve, so he already six feet higher, and if you put a ranch-style house up there, six, at, say sixteen feet, so he's going to be sixteen feet above eighteen.
If I may, again...
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I heard the applicant state something about the trees, is it fair for me to assume that those trees currently, when they're, when they're leased in the summertime, when people mostly enjoy these views, block more view than this new structure would?
Well, in their plan, these trees are being removed, but they've also requested to replace them with some other...
Okay, okay.
Screening, screening vegetation.
Okay. Thank you.
More of the people...
No, thank you, I'm, I'm talking to this man now.
So, I don't know, if it makes sense, I'm not a good drafter.
It was just a question.
Sound like this.
Would you like me to answer your...
Yeah, go ahead.
It's not something I'm interested in, to be frank.
Well, we require a variance, it'd be very hard, because then you, then you're covering fifty, sixty percent.
The design is, is related to the area, I think it seems to me, and I know that the abutters have just seen the drawings, but it seems to me that everyone, that these, these abutters feel that I'm building them in stracity, which is really not the case, it's a size home that works in the neighborhood, which all of our neighbors have. The case of Chief, Chief McDuffie that was brought up, having two lots, I mean, quick math, sounds like two thousand square feet per lot, and I think it's bigger than four thousand, but, you know, I don't think it's the point. The point is, is that the, the way that this plan has been drawn is uniform, in fact, and still going to be one of the smaller homes on that waterfront as you go down Oak Street. The neighbors to, to my right, the views that you're seeing in those pictures, which are lovely, are an angle, if you look straight out of their home, they're looking directly at the water, and as far as the height goes of their home, it's still going to be, they're the, they're one of the highest in the neighborhood, so they're going to be still quite, quite a bit above where we are, especially what their property sits above. My abutter from across the street, to make sure the clarity was, was on your question about walking up the stairs, on the water side of their home, they do walk upstairs, there is no access from the road to walk into the home, except for the other side of the house, so the answer is that they do walk upstairs, and their house does sit far above, you know, where we are and where we, where we will be. The home is, is increasing the footprint, I'm going to go back to the question about the existing footprint, because we did get approval to go up on the existing footprint, but when we were determined that we couldn't use the existing foundation, I thought it just because the property, you know, was, footprint was small, that increasing it by four feet wide made a big difference on the interior to lay it out properly, and it's no further, closer to the coastal banks, it's sitting in the exact same location, the ten feet towards the street is where it was added the square footage, but the square footage, again, I don't think is unreasonable for a home on this...
I think there are other people.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Let's hear from other people, somebody, please, go on, name and address for the record.
Ted Bruggeoli, I live at fifteen Oak Hill Road, my family has been in Wareham since the twenties, I've got, you might know my family name, Bruggeoli, we're famous for basketball in the town of Wareham, and the thing that strikes me is that if you consider basketball or any sport, there's rules and regulations on how to play the game, and that's what you people are doing here, you're changing the rules of the game.
Not quite, we play them by the, we can't change it.
Let me tell you this, I live at fifteen Oak Hill Road, I've got three seawalls, I was told twenty-two years ago that I couldn't plant a garden on that property.
Couldn't, I'm sorry, couldn't?
Plant the garden on the seawall, because of the Conservation Commission, and with milkweed, I had to leave the milkweed there, so here you've got a lot that's substandard, it's be, it's almost below sea level, and candidly, I think you're doing him a disservice by allowing... by allowing him to put a house in it.
Yeah, but what you're talking, there, first of all, there's a house there.
It's an existing house. Yes, there's also a shed.
But your, your comment has to bring to the conservation, your comment, the conservation thing. And we're not just given, we don't just, we follow the rules and regs of the bylaws, the state and the town. We don't just hand it because we feel like it. There, I mean, we have a book we go by, and we use our, like, we are very careful how we make our decisions and our, our conditions, our granting or non-granting.
How do you consider a property that's technically wetland?
It's not.
How do you do that?
That's not our call. This is a conservation call. We, I mean.
Even if we were to grant our special permit.
I beg your pardon?
Even if we were to grant the special permit, the conservation commission would still, could still conceivably, that is within, within their purview, not within our purview. And perhaps if, if it should not be, if they should not grant whatever relief is required from them due to the rules that they follow.
Well, in a sense, that's, in a sense, that's, that gives him false hope.
Well, he's gotta go through his, he's gotta go through his paces, right?
The big boy is, look, I live with it. Jim?
Mr. Bruggeoli.
Yes, sir. I love the way you pronounce the name.
Thank you. I want to respond to your comment about the wetland. And I'll stand correction if I misspeak, but I think that there's a misconception in the room this evening between wetlands and flood zones and where homes can and cannot be built. It's perfectly okay to build a home in a flood zone. It's not okay to build in a wetland. Your land is not in a wetland, it's in a flood zone. But in order to build in a flood zone, as your house is, because I know where your home is, you allowed Clem to put his boat in front of your house for many, many years, and you just lost a dear friend. My respects to that, sir. Your house is in the flood zone.
I think it's in the X-zone. I think there's two different types.
So it's okay.
The X-zone and the Y-zone.
My, my point isn't whether you have it and you.
The Y-zone.
He has it and she shouldn't, or he has it and he couldn't. My point is, let's separate wetlands from flood zones and where you can and can't build a house. You certainly can build a house in a flood zone. His land, to my knowledge, is not a wetland. A botanist would determine if it's a wetland or not, and that determination has not been made or presented to us. But thank you for your thoughts tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ma'am, do you want to say something? No, you're good. All right, Charlie, any comments?
Did you all have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, let's see if Charlie, any comments? Yeah, that you could do, let's.
The only thing that I, as I've been hearing, I can remember a situation that I was involved in, up in the Shangri-La area, there, there were all views. One of the things which we did was take the, our site plan, locate the adjacent buildings, so that we could draw a line of sight from the adjacent building across the front of the building that we were concerned with, to see whether or not the views were really obstructed. There may be some challenge to this, but as I'm looking at the photograph that's taken from a second floor deck, apparently a deck of some sort of the second floor, no, I don't know. But if the building is not going to be built anymore to the right and simply rises up from the corner of the building, the only thing that would be obscured would be the place that's directly behind the building that they want to revise. Nothing would obscure the abutter's view to the right of that. That having been said, with respect to the owner across the street, if the elevation of that building were drawn on a profile to include Oak Hill Road, include the ground going down to the building that exists that they want to renovate, and if they were to take the profile of the new building and incorporate that, you would be able to tell whether the views would be obstructed that way. So there is some things you could do, plan-wise, which might assist you in making your decision.
So, so you want the applicant to send his engineer go in his people's yard and take elevations and shot?
Let me put it this way. Massachusetts statute says that with proper notice, a survey has a right to enter onto anyone's property to make surveys. That notice is either given by card, or if you want to do it by certified mail, registered mail, you could do that. But statutorily, a surveyor is allowed to do that in order to obtain information for a survey.
I wouldn't be opposed to that.
All right, let, let's play the devil's. Say, say, it's gonna obstruction views for some people, but to what certain extent, we say yes or no. We are, we all know it's gonna take some views. I don't think, I think it'll take minimum personally.
But one of the things about these photographs is that whenever you take a photograph like this, the perspective is changed. You really can't tell how high above the roof line of the existing house you are.
Right.
Whereas if you do a profile view, an elevation, a cross-section from one building across the road to the next building, down to the water, you can see what the slope of the ground is, what the height of the roof would be, and what vertical views would be obstructed by the new construction. You can also do it from side to side by locating the buildings on each side that's shown on your plan. So you could then draw lines across the front of that to see whether or not their view is really obstructed or how much it's obstructed.
Right, but, but my question.
Right now, my opinion is, everybody's guessing as to what the views are.
Right, but my question is, say we do these plans you're talking about, and it comes back, and it blocks a view twenty percent. What's our threshold? What's the law says? I mean.
I think view is, I think the view is, our bylaw, I've left my copy at work today, I'm not looking at it, but apparently does take into consideration views. I don't think all bylaws do. Obviously, we live in a coastal area, so that makes sense. However, it's just one of many considerations, right?
Right.
So.
Go ahead.
I read recently that there was a meeting with the, I think the owner of Restaurant in Onset, the, across from Mark Anthony's, by the band show.
Mr. Cabalas, yeah.
And there was a request to add.
Addition, yes.
Add an addition. And there were several abutters that were there that were complaining.
Right, but that's totally different. He was asking for a variance to be three-quarter inch from the property line. That was the problem.
Yeah, I just, in, in the notes that I read, though, there was some, some comments about the, it was, it was not approved.
Yeah, but.
Partially because of the complaints from the abutters and the fact that their, that their views were being impaired.
I, I'll say this, because I read the reporting on that. I did not find the articles to be very accurate representations of what we voiced our concerns to be.
I think I, I, I'm not sure if I thought I was reading the minutes of the meeting.
Arca, the thing is.
They did voice concerns about views, but it was a totally different standard, and that's certainly not.
The, Mr. Cabalas were asking for a variance to be, for instance, here, this gentleman has setback, what's a setback on the side you have here? Fourteen point eight feet. That, that, the one you're talking about, that's fourteen point eight feet. There were three-quarter inch.
Yeah, I, I know there was two parts of it. One was he was trying to do some expansion on the first floor.
There was people concerned with the view and stuff, but that wasn't our concern. It was very strong to prove a hardship to grant a variance.
Okay, so I'm just kind of, I'm just kind of stating to you that, you know, I don't, I know it's at your discretion, but, and again, twenty percent, forty percent, how much of obstruction. It's, it's a quality of life issue for me and my family, so I would, I would appreciate it if you gave it some, some serious consideration.
We do, but unless we, unless, unless, I don't feel comfortable unless I could talk to town, town council or somebody to have a threshold, because we're not gonna make this, have this gentleman make the plans, and who's gonna say what's, what, what it is?
I, I don't know that there is other, that, that there is any.
You understand?
Yes, sir.
I know, I understand.
Let, let Mr. Brad do it.
Can I just jump in?
Yeah.
So, I, I have to look at these cases every day, and I have to look at these through a lens where, where if I don't feel like I can be consistent in, in my findings, then, then that automatically tells me that there's something wrong, okay? And when, when I looked at this project, I don't have any specific preference, one way or the other. But what's right is right. So I'm just gonna go through a few of the items that you guys all talked about. So in, in Massachusetts, a view requires a view easement. View is not protected in Massachusetts, so we'll get that one out of the way.
So that's in the bylaw, though?
No, but it's, it's a consideration. It's a consideration in the bylaw, but view is not protected in Massachusetts.
We're fully, we're fully understanding of that.
Okay. The, the house down the street being on two lots, those two lots together are still not a conforming lot. So whether it's one or two, it still doesn't amount to a conforming lot.
That's fine. I, I don't think that we had, I don't think.
I, I didn't interrupt you, so, okay? So thirteen thirty-five says that a non-conforming single or two-family residential structure, okay, if you wanna, basically in the first paragraph, if you want to add on to a non-conforming structure, I can allow that by right if, if the addition itself conforms to all dimensional characteristics of the bylaw. It says that right in the first two sentences. So what's the difference between the addition on the structure or the entire structure itself?
I was opposed to the original plan.
Okay.
For the same reason.
Okay. Now, I just want to make one point. If, if this lot did not have a house on it, this lot was created prior to when Wareham zoning bylaw was created. If this lot did not have a house on it, he could maximize the size of the house, and he could build anywhere he wanted on that property, because it was prior to zoning bylaw. But because there's a house on there now that conforms, it conforms now to all dimensional characteristics, and the new one is going to also conform to all dimensional characteristics.
I don't know. What was the point on that? I don't understand.
Let's not finish his point.
All I'm getting at is that it's, it's, there's just a lot of points being brought up that I feel are not totally relevant.
Yeah, my, my only, my main and only concern is the, is the view that is going to be impacted for me. That's my only concern.
Sir, Counselor.
Again, Mr. Accrino, I've had this discussion before. This parallel of a grandfathered lot and a grand, and somehow extending that to a non-conforming structure, I, I just think you're off-base on that.
Well, there's actually three different items. You have lots, structures, and uses. And they're all individual. If this, if the lot itself, the grandfathered lot, if it meets the criteria for a grandfathered lot, five thousand square feet, conforming at the time it was created, and in the, in a, in an area zone for residential use, if there was no house on it, he could build a house because it was a grandfathered lot. What, what you're saying is that because there's a house on it, he loses the protection of that lot.
Yeah, it's neither here nor there. It is what it is.
There is a, a structure on it. There's been a structure on it since nineteen forty-one. This grandfathering discussion about lots is completely irrelevant. And if you felt so strongly, with all due respect, because he was very patient, I love the gab, and he was very patient with me, if you felt so strongly, you should have issued the building permit. That's why we started this discussion. If, if you felt that way, you should have. And then we would have an appeal, or, and we would have seen how it would have shake out. But you, you can't not give the building a per, permit and then come and make the argument now.
No, I gave Mr. Spinoli the option of applying on his own. I did not.
Okay.
It was my decision.
I'd like you guys to direct your comments to the chair, please.
Yes, before I don't jump in.
I'd like to make one last comment about the.
All right, go ahead.
Of an improvement of their view. These trees that are coming down, they don't affect me one way or another, because they're to the right and behind my property essentially. Those trees coming down are a major improvement of their view. I'm taking down a shed as well, which would improve the abutter from across the street's view. There's also a small tree that is between the house to my left, which probably will have to come down when we replace the retaining wall, which has failed. Thinking, the small bit of the view here that we're talking about is going to be greatly improved with what's coming out.
So, just one, one comment on that. The, the trees that are scheduled to, to be removed, they're all in a straight line. And the largest of the trees is the closest to the road, and that's the one that's, that's gonna stay there. So, yes, the trees that are coming down may improve the view, but the, the biggest obstruction on that respect is that large tree, which is, which I believe is scheduled to remain in place.
The trees impact me the most. I, I really, everyone wants to go home, so let's not beat this to death. These trees are, the branches are sticking way out in my yard. Quite frankly, they're dead. They're probably risk, and, and if I really wanted to be, you know, a real jerk to this guy, I would force him to take them down because they're a threat to my home right now.
I volunteered to take them.
Excuse me, time out. I'm sorry, sorry. You have to take those branches, but keep going.
Let's skip, let's go beyond the trees. One last thing I would say, and literally this is it for me. This bylaw that Wareham has is very strong. And this, this is about view. It's being minimized. It isn't in the bylaw. It's very much a key part of the bylaw. It, it is part of the definition of substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So it's right there. And, and.
With the key word substantially. Thank you, sir.
So go ahead.
Thank you again, Brad Bertolo, J.C. Engineering. I'd like to just, I'll make a few comments. Thirteen thirty-five references or pertains to non-conforming structures. This is not a non-conforming structure. It's a non-conforming lot. So we are here by right to build a house, tear down and rebuild this within the setback requirements and get a building permit. As advised by the inspector, this will be the most timely process, because we'll be back in front of this board anyways, because they're gonna appeal the project if we just went for a building permit. So we would have been back here anyways. So to give notice to the all the abutters, we decided to move forward with a special permit, knowing that we have a conforming structure that exists, and what's gonna be proposed is a conforming structure. The structure itself is, is increasing approximately four feet wider than the existing structure, and is not too much wider than the existing overhangs on the structure itself, the existing structure. I'm reviewing the picture that was passed out this evening. That shows the existing structure and the trees that are on this side here. The major tree that's out front is the one tree that's staying. As you can see where the majority of the branches are, they're above the water, above the trees across from the water. Major views, either side of the property. What we're doing is building in the center, right where the house is. Coming forward as they pushed at the conservation hearing, it's gonna have the same view if it's forward or back. It actually will go higher if I bring it up, because the grade comes up higher. So the house will sit even higher if the house was set twenty feet forward as they're trying to push. The house itself is conforming. It's gonna be roughly twenty-eight feet up above average grade. It's actually less than that in the front. My numbers I've stated are from average grade, as the definition states. Front of the house is gonna be roughly elevation sixteen point five. Back of the house is elevation nine roughly proposed. Average grade is around twelve point nine. Taking into consideration the height, that's how I came up with that. So the height from the street is actually, from the front, is actually less. That being said, I think we have a pretty straightforward project here. We've already been approved by conservation. And the three trees that I can see here that are actually providing some problems with the view, even though the majority of the branches are all above the water. I'm assuming that waterfront property, your view is of the water, not the skyline above it. And they're pretty much not gonna impact on either side of the project. It's actually gonna increase the views on either side of this dwelling.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion, sir.
Go ahead.
Actually, my motion has two parts. The first part of my motion is that because this is recorded, and there can be some misconceptions, I would like thirteen thirty-five in its entirety read into the record for public consumption. Second part of my.
Yeah, I think it is the rec, it is in the record. I don't.
It's in, I, I know, but I would like to read it so that everybody, I, I don't need to read it tonight, because the second part of my motion is that we move to continue this to two weeks from tonight and give members of the board the opportunity to go to the site personally and make some. I, I have a personal feeling in, in life that a picture is worth a thousand words, and that an onsite visit is worth a thousand pitches. So.
I agree with that, Jim. I, I would like, I would like to do that and also take some time to.
That said, that said, I, I reiterate, I, I move.
That said, I, I reiterate, I, I move to read 1335 into the record, and I also move to continue to two weeks from tonight.
I, I will say this with respect to who's here and able to vote, I am not able to be here two weeks from tonight, so rather than have people show up and there not be enough people...
Carl, if he reviews the record, he could say...
Okay.
Are you going to be here?
Just didn't want to inconvenience anyone.
Wilma, you going to be here?
The help of God.
Two weeks, 24, okay. Carl, will, he, I talked to him, he said he'll review the tapes, okay.
I, I don't mean to interrupt, but for the record, if you would like to enter onto our property to, to do that, that, that's perfectly fine.
Thank you. All right, go ahead, I mean, do you have a second for Jim, motion?
A second.
Second by Jen, all in favor?
Use the microphone, please.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain, go ahead, Jim.
What are we, what are we going to...
I thought you were going to read 1335.
Oh, you want to read it in tonight?
No, I don't want to.
No, I'll read it in tonight, get it out of the way. And I, and I also would, before I read this, I'd like to reiterate, I've read it while we were sitting here, I'm going to read it out loud, I'm not the greatest orator, but I'll do my best. I want to repeat what the building inspector said earlier, what the applicant said earlier, and what I heard is that having read 1335, it would appear to me that they in fact could have issued this building permit without coming in front of this board, and as a courtesy to the neighborhood, that's why they're here. That's what I've heard, if I've heard wrong, I'm sorry, but that said, let me read page 98 of the bylaws, section 1335, heading Procedures. As provided for in Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6, a non-conforming, single or two-family dwelling or structure accessory thereto may be altered, reconstructed, extended, or otherwise structurally changed, provided that, one, the property alteration, extension, or structural change itself conforms to the requirements of the present bylaw and does not intensify any existing nonconformities or result in any additional nonconformities, in which event the building inspector may issue a building permit and an application to the Board of Appeals need not be made. Or, two, as provided below, the Board of Appeals finds that, a, there is no substantial increase in the nonconforming nature of said structure, and i, i, such reconstruction, alteration, or extension will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure or use. Recognizing the need to provide guidelines for determining the meaning of the phrases "increase the nonconforming nature of said structure" and "substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood," the following shall apply to the review of applications subject to the provision to alter, reconstruct, extend, or structurally change a pre-existing, nonconforming, single and two-family residential structure. A, an application must be made to the Board of Appeals to expand or change the structure. B, the Board of Appeals must make a determination as to the particular respect, respects in which the existing structure or lot does not conform to the requirements of the present bylaw. C, should the Board of Appeals conclude that the proposed changes would substantially increase the nonconforming nature of the structure or lot, the applicant will not be entitled to issue, to the issuance of a special permit. D, if the Board of Appeals determines that the proposal will not substantially increase the nonconforming nature of the structure or the lot, the applicant will also be required to show that the change will not be substantially more detrimental than the existing, nonconforming structure or use to the neighborhood. If the Board of Appeals determines that the proposal will be more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, the special permit sought will be denied unless the Board of Appeals determines that a special permit can be approved with conditions that would make the changes substantially not more detrimental, in which case the Board of Appeals may approve a special permit with such conditions. F, for the purposes of this section, determination of substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood shall include consideration of the impacts to the general and immediate neighborhood from the resulting height, building coverage, impervious coverage, and width of the altered, reconstructed, extended, or structurally changed structure. Additionally, a determination whether an altered, reconstructed, extended, or structurally changed structure will be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood shall include the resulting impacts to views and vistas from abutting properties and public and private ways, increase in traffic, noise, surface water runoff, and related site planning issues. End.
Okay, very well, I guess we'll see you on May 24th. Thank you very much. Thank you. I, I'll set aside for this case, Jim.
We're continued, yep.
We're just going to continue, I guess.
We're going to pass everything in from this one and...
No, Jim, J and J. For Brian, my, my case.
I got it, I want to get this one in the folder before we, because I'll have stuff everywhere.
We're going to continue, we're not going to open them.
We're going to continue, which one, this?
Mine.
We're going to continue? Okay, so I don't need to worry.
All right.
This is part of it, this is all part of it. Anybody else got anything else to go in this folder?
Brian, I want to come forward, Jim, I want to take this over.
Yep.
I don't know how this is supposed to be.
Anything else over there? Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. Brian, deal with me for one minute.
It's happened like twice tonight.
You always end up being last here, is this, this is not the first time that you've sat through. You sense it?
Conspiracy, that's costing me a lot of money.
Is it, you, you...
You, my lawyer, and Charlie.
We want number...
Seventeen, you don't need to file it, Jim, it's already open.
It's already been opened?
Yep.
We have to see it.
Seventeen, that's seventeen.
No, we have to see the...
Okay, our chairman is sitting aside because he does have a direct interest in this property. I will sit for this one, and I understand you would like to request a continuance. Anybody on the board have any objections to that?
I do not.
Then I would hope that somebody would make a recommend, a motion that we...
I'll make the motion to continue the public hearing.
Don't we have any...
Jake, can you second that for us?
Second that.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? You're continued, you want to come two weeks?
Two weeks, certainly.
24th, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Boy, you are a patient guy.
I'll bring a book next time, right?
I wish I had known, we could have done, we could have put you out of the way early, too.
All right.
I don't think so, no. You want to take a motion for anything?
Oh, my goodness.
All right, make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do you have a second to adjourn?
Right, right, right.
Jen?
Second.
Second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, thank you, thank you.